I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, March 23rd. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. We have no presentations this evening, but I'd like to announce that we do have Director of Public Works Ed Gentile, Chief of Police Don Anderson, Mike Wheeler from TV 79 on the line, along with our board members Sarah Newman, David Martin, and Krista McNamara, who are teleconferencing in for our meeting tonight. We are putting into effect the meeting allowances made under Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B, which suspends the statutory in-person meeting requirements. So hopefully you will bear with us with our new technology this evening. Could everyone who's on the phone, please put their phone on mute? And you can unmute when we call on you to speak. Thank you. I will move to my first selectmen's report. I will cover items related to the current COVID-19 crisis under our Agenda Item, New Business, Item Number Two, Update and Discussion of COVID-19 Response. But a few other items to talk with you this evening. Town Hall staff, as of tomorrow, we will be operating on an essential staff-only model. No public will be coming into Town Hall. Residents can access town services by going online, calling by phone. We are trying to limit anyone's interactions in person with Town Hall staff. And I'm very grateful to our staff for working with us through these unusual times and to continuing to provide an excellent level of service in spite of the current crisis. We will, for my board's purposes, tonight, whenever we take a vote, we will be using a roll-call vote model so that we can make sure that we record your votes accordingly. And I want to thank the Darien Public Schools, the school administration, all of our amazing teachers and our parents, who I know things haven't been easy for our parents and our kids with them being home. Today was day one of the new e-learning model, and I heard that it generally went well. Dr. Adley said it generally went well. I know it's an adjustment for everyone, but I'm so proud of our district for being able to get that up and running very quickly so that our kids can begin to continue to learn their new content rather than just work on enrichment activities. So I look forward to hearing more about how that goes in the coming days. And with that, I'll move to the Town Administrator's Report.
Mine would be mostly the same as Jamie's. We started pairing down staff and preparing for this eventuality. And I just have to say, I think our department heads and our staff have been really terrific, stepping up, you know, last week while we were on the limited access, working on different ways that we could make our services available to the public while not serving them in person. And I just think we have a pretty terrific team here getting that done.
I agree. Thank you. We'll move on to New Business. New Business Item Number One is to discuss and take action on a request to accept a gift from the Darien Foundation. This gift is related to TV 79 and a new platform called Castis TV. And Mike Wheeler, if you're on the line, I would love for you to join the conversation and give us a summary. Tell us about why this is important to you. And I want to acknowledge the Darien Foundation for their generosity and willingness to participate with the Town of Darien on this next level of service. Are you there, Mike?
I am.
Good evening.
Essentially, the, good evening. Essentially, the, we're also broadcasting the meeting tonight live on Facebook as well as on YouTube. As you know, we really haven't updated the basic infrastructure of TV 79 since we launched. Our ability to broadcast on TV 79 and then on YouTube is four DVD players stacked up where DVDs play in rotation unless it's a live show. So through the Darien Foundation, they've given us a grant that we can use by Castis TV, which is a platform that's used by about 400 municipalities, that will allow us not only to get our, get every live meeting on demand almost instantaneously and not the delay sometimes of a day or two when someone has to come in and dub the DVD. But the program manager can also program the interstitial with announcements, with a lot of other content. So right now, only about half of our, the meetings that we shoot ever get on the Darien TV, Channel 79, Channel Live, they're on Vimeo. This way, we'll be able to broadcast all of the 800 hours that we record in a calendar year.
Mike, will you still continue to use the Vimeo service as well?
Oh, yes. Vimeo's the base of the on-demand. This is just to allow us the ability to digitally do live meetings. Here, right now, if we do a meeting at the Mather Center, someone has to go down there with a camera, come back with a small stick, put it in, wait till the next morning, and then download it onto Vimeo. It's a manually intensive process, and this will help vastly improve our workflow. And we also have two new cameras. Those are the last cameras from 2008 that we'll be replacing along with this, which are the last two components of the gift from the Darien Foundation.
Okay. And we should tell the public that the gift, the grant and the gift is in a total amount of $50,768. So in order-
Correct. And they pay all the invoices.
Okay. So in order to do this in an orderly fashion, I'm going to call on my individual board members to see if they have additional questions related to this gift. So I will start with Sarah. Do you have questions for Mike Wheeler?
I do not. I applaud the efforts to improve. I know it's such a valuable asset for our town. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Krista, do you have questions?
Yes, thanks so much, Mike, for the presentation and to the Darien Foundation for the gift. I just wanted to speak publicly, if you could address the ongoing maintenance costs, if anything, for the town. So we always want to make sure that any gift we receive, that we are aware of any other costs that we may be incurring on an ongoing basis. Could you briefly address that?
They do have an online chat room that we have the option, but not the requirement, to license at a price of $1,800 a year. Jim does not believe that we will need it, but it, we are not required to take it. It is at our, it is at our option.
Okay. So otherwise, aside from that optional chat room for $1,800, you do not expect any other ongoing maintenance costs, correct?
Correct. There are none required in the contract.
Perfect. Great. Thanks so much, Mike. That's my only question.
Okay. David, do you have questions?
No questions at this time.
Okay, great. Kip, questions?
No. Very happy that it's going forward.
Okay. Yes, again, to thank the Darien Foundation for their generosity. So, let's see. We have a resolution before us, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a gift to TV Channel 79 in the amount of $50,768 for equipment from the Darien Foundation. I will entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Kip moves. May I have a second?
Second, Sarah.
Sarah, thank you. Okay, all those in favor, we're going to do a roll call. So, Kip and Sarah, Krista, how do you, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
David, how do you vote?
Oh, yes.
And Jamie Stevenson votes yes. That's unanimous. Great. Mike, thank you very much for joining our meeting tonight, and we look forward to seeing the Castis system in operation going forward. Can you maybe tell us what the timeline for implementation is?
Well, we want to do it in the summer because we'll be offline for three days during the installation. So we wanted to get this through. The vendor is having some supply issues in their supply chain, and we want to make sure we get our order in so we're prepared to do the installation in the summer.
Okay, perfect. Great. Thank you. Thank you very much, and thanks for joining us this evening.
Thanks to you and thanks to the Darien Foundation.
Okay. Item Number Two, New Business, Update and Discussion on the COVID-19 Response. So I have a number of items to update you on tonight. This is certainly not a comprehensive list. I have, and many others of our first responders have been working on COVID-19 response 24/7. It is a very interesting time that we're living in, and the coordination between the federal government, state government, and local government is interesting, changing every day. But I'm very, very proud of the work that we're doing here in the Town of Darien for our residents. A situation report as of this evening, we have 11 positive cases in the Town of Darien. There are 415 cases statewide. There are 270 cases in Fairfield County. It's absolutely true that Fairfield County is considered to be the epicenter of the COVID virus here in Connecticut. Fifty-four of the 415 cases are hospitalized patients, and we have had 10 deaths to date. It's very sad. To give you some color of the distribution of the cases here in Fairfield County, Westport has 74 cases, Greenwich has 31, Stamford has 30, Norwalk 28, Danbury 15, Ridgefield 13, and then we're next in line with our 11 cases. It's interesting to note that the individuals who are testing positive are across all age groups, with thankfully our youngest children being the least number of positive cases, but they are still or can still be affected. The bulk of the cases are in the age group of 40 to 69, and we don't have enough data to be able to tell you any other commonalities among those age groups. It's still true that the elderly and those with underlying medical conditions are particularly susceptible for severe outcomes from COVID. But different than what we originally heard is that this sort of middle-aged age group is in fact acquiring the virus more readily than we had originally thought. So we'll keep tabs on that, and we will try and make sure that we get whatever demographic or commonalities that might come through as data is collected. There simply is not enough data being collected at this point in time due to the initial shortage of tests, which is improving thankfully. There is a severe shortage of personal protective equipment. They call it PPE. Those are the gowns and the masks and the gloves that are required for any of the people that are administering the tests, and hospital workers and healthcare workers. So there is an all-out call for personal protective equipment for acquisition by the state and all other agencies throughout Connecticut at this moment. So we hope that things will be ramping up quickly. To that end, today was the Town of Darien's first drive-through testing. We provided the Darien High School as the site for Murphy Medical Associates to run a drive-through testing clinic. Today, there were 50 people scheduled to be tested at the Darien site, spite of the weather. They worked diligently and things went very smoothly. There were no more than three or four cars in queue at any one time, so there were no impacts to the neighborhood at all. We are hoping that as capacity increases with PPE and test kits, that we will be able to expand our testing days and hours, and I'll be working very closely with Dr. Stephen Murphy to make sure that that happens. I want to thank the, there was a cadre of nurse volunteers from the Town of Darien who were on-site today assisting with this testing, and I want to thank them very much. Our healthcare workers are on the front lines right now, and I think it's remarkable to me that we have folks who are willingly step up to do this really important work. So I'm deeply grateful for that. A couple ancillary items. I know that you've all been receiving messages and press releases from me. Socially distancing is the most important thing for us to do right now. We can, we can stop this virus in its tracks if we all pledge to ourselves and one another that we are going to follow the appropriate social distancing protocols. I was very proud of our community on Saturday. I drove the parks and beaches. Everybody was doing a really great job, lots of families out together. That's wonderful. However, yesterday, there was a lot of news, and I saw some actual pictures of groups of adults and groups of teenagers and college-age students gathering at our beaches. Folks, we simply can't have this. It would be a terrible thing for any one of us to have the virus, not be symptomatic, and transfer it to one of our friends, one of our loved ones, our parents, our grandparents, somebody with medical conditions. So please, you cannot gather. I know the governor's guidance is that folks shouldn't be gathering in groups of 50 or more. That's very outdated advice at this point, and I do hope that he updates his executive order. The president has recommended not gathering in groups of 10 or more. At this point, I urge the Town of Darien to simply not gather. This is a time that we, we are forced to be with our families. I think there's some silver linings and some really beautiful opportunities in that. But in order to keep our community safe, we have to do the right thing. And we have to hold back from having parties and getting together for cocktail parties at the beaches. And parents, you need to help your children understand in whatever way is meaningful and appropriate for you. You can't have playdates, and you can't let your kids gather outside in the neighborhood. As much as we'd like that to be happening right now, it simply can't. So I'm really asking for your cooperation in that. I don't want to close the parks and beaches, but if folks don't follow these rules, I'll be forced to close the parks and beaches, and that would be a shame because the outdoors is a very therapeutic place for us to be. Certainly not today, but this weekend was beautiful, and I love seeing people out, enjoying the fresh air, and all of the wonderful mental health benefits that that brings. So, help me out. Help us out. Keep us safe and stay home and don't gather. I have waived the enforcement of the town's plastic bag ordinance. Our grocers, who are also on the front lines of COVID response, are very concerned about the potential transfer of the virus from recyclable bags. Some of our grocers, if you bring a recyclable bag, they will make you pack your groceries yourself, which is fine. But we are allowing them, if they have any plastic bags and they want to continue to use those, it's just fine at this point in time. The governor, Governor Lamont, has issued a whole series of executive orders. I think we're up to Order 7J at this point in time. All of those orders are listed in two places. You can find them on the homepage of the Town of Darien website, and you can also find them and a host of other important information at ct.gov/coronavirus. At that ct.gov address, you can also find the daily case data updates, if you want to follow that on your own. There's too much to be able to share in those executive orders. There's three things that I'd like to bring to your attention in some of those orders. The governor has provided relief for the municipal budget adoption procedures in one of his orders, Order 7I. We are seeking legal clarification on that as we speak so that we can understand exactly how the Town of Darien, with a representative town meeting and a Board of Finance as the budget-making authority, can actually approve a budget, and if the governor's guidance includes both the operating and capital budgets, or if it's only the operating budget. So more to come on that, and we will be meeting with the necessary folks in town to, to work on whatever our plan is going to be. In Governor's Order 7H, he put a limitation on orders coming from municipal chief executive officials, like me. Many chief executive officers were doing things proactively to get ahead of the COVID virus as best they can, but the governor prefers a coordinated response through the governor's office. So I am seeking information also from our legal counsel to the effect of what exactly does that mean for me? What can I and what can't I do? Because we want to be as aggressive as we can and do our part to make sure that we are stopping the virus in its tracks. Importantly, an order was issued, and then guidance was issued last night in Order 7J about local businesses. And the governor has now determined that businesses fall into two categories, either essential businesses or non-essential businesses. And that list is also available in the governor's order, and there's information on our town website about that. We are handling questions from our local businesses on a case-by-case basis regarding that. I think the generally good news is most businesses are exempt. So hopefully, our town, our town has been, from an economics perspective, it's fair to say that our local businesses have been devastated by the COVID virus. But there are some people who are working diligently out there to bring support to our local businesses, and I want to thank them so very much. This weekend, we've been working with the Community Fund and the Community Foundation, the Darien Foundation, I'm sorry, Darien Foundation and the Community Fund of Darien to come up with ways that we can support our local businesses. There is an effort called Corbin Cares that is in partnership with Food Rescue USA that will allow food to be purchased from our local restaurants, which is fantastic to help them stay in business. As you know, our bars and restaurants that serve food are allowed to continue to operate with takeout and curbside pickup. And so hopefully, everybody's doing that to the best you can, support our local restaurants in that regard. So I want to thank again the Community Fund and the Darien Foundation for trying to innovate in these unusual times. Both of those organizations as well are supporting our Human Service Department. As you might imagine, our caseload is typically about 125 clients, but that's expanding every day. And our Human Service Department is also on the front lines and providing meals to the public school kids that are on the free and reduced lunch program. So we have a lot going on here. Our senior program, we closed down some time ago. We provided pickup lunches, but that program ended today. So we are going to find new ways, probably in partnership with the Community Fund, the Darien Foundation, and Food Rescue USA to also provide meals to our seniors. So some really wonderful ideas and stories. If you have ideas about other ways that we can support our local businesses, please contact me. I'll be working closely with our Board of Finance and several departments in Town Hall and our town attorney to find ways that we can, as a government entity, support our local businesses. So I will keep you posted on those activities as they become more evident. I think that I will stop there, and I would like to take questions from my fellow board members if you have any questions at this time. So we'll start with Krista. Do you have any additional questions for me, Krista, on COVID-19?
Um, no, I think you addressed, we just looked for an update on those, a couple of items you mentioned. You were still seeking legal clarification, so that's all set. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Sarah?
No, I have no questions. I would reiterate, if possible, obviously, everyone, please stay home. It is really our best line of defense. I do understand they need to go to the grocery store and obviously getting some takeout from our lovely restaurants in town to keep them alive.
Yep, thank you. I do want to add that we've had several people, a number of people, reach out asking what they can do to help, to volunteer for the town at this time. I really want to thank them for that. And I've tasked Sarah and Krista with taking in those volunteer offers, and when we have opportunities for volunteers, they will be reaching out to engage with those folks. David, do you have any additional questions at this time?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kip?
Yes, you declared a state of emergency in the town.
Yes.
I think it'd be helpful for the public to understand what exactly does that mean going forward.
Great. So thank you for that. When the governor issued his state of emergency, state of public health emergency and civil preparedness emergencies, actually, two different emergencies, when he did that, that gave the chief executive officer of every municipality broad and exclusive powers to help manage and mitigate the crisis. Whatever needs to be done, we are authorized to do that. So the traditional avenues of, of local approvals and seeking public inputs on decision-making, I know it's very unusual for us because we have a very participatory decision-making process in town government, but those orders by the governor set those aside for the time and allow the chief executive officer to make whatever decisions, make whatever procurements are necessary in order to mitigate the crisis. I declared a local state of emergency. It wasn't necessary to do so, quite frankly. It doesn't give me any additional powers, but I did it in support of the governor's actions and to underscore the magnitude of the crisis that is before us. So we are all working in concert. The National Declaration of Emergency, the state's declarations, and the local declarations allow us to all be working in concert with one another. Does that answer your question, Kip?
It does. Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you. Okay, so let's move on, unless there's any other questions. We'll move on to New Business, Item Number Three, Discuss and Take Action on Request for Bid Waivers. Kate, maybe you'd like-
[unintelligible].
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Is that Sarah?
Um, sorry, this is Krista. I'm sorry. Just to the point we mentioned about social distancing, you talked about the parks and the beach, which is a great outset. Can you talk a little bit briefly about the role of the Darien Police Department? Are they being asked to help enforce this message? Is that something that you can comment briefly on?
Yes, I can. We have, Dr. Adley, first and foremost, has reached out to the police department to assist with driving by school facilities. When the schools were closed to the students at that same time, the district closed all of the school fields. So, you know, the weather's been, until today, has been beautiful, so lots of people have been out and about, and there was concerns about kids gathering, playing organized sports. So the fields were closed, and Dr. Adley reached out to the chief of police to ask them to do drive-bys and to- them to do drive-bys and to break up the clusters of students that were congregating. So we have now called on the Darien Police Department to do the same in our parks and beaches. We are not under a mandatory community quarantine at this point in time that would authorize our local law enforcement to provide law enforcement actions against anyone who disobeys those orders. So right now, we're doing it on a, you know, an encouraging basis and asking for the assistance of the police department. I hope we don't get to the point where the police are actually engaged to, in their full capacity of law enforcement, to issue orders. I would like to mention, not really to scare anybody, but it is the truth. If we go into a quarantine where law enforcement is entrusted with enforcing, to break a quarantine is a felony. And so we really don't want to get to that point. So let's socially distance and not gather. Does that help you, Krista?
Perfect. Yeah, thank you very much. I think the public will be pleased to hear that we also have the support, as always, of our Darien Police Department and to reiterate this important point to everyone out there. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. So Kate, I'm going to turn to you for the...
The waivers.
Waivers, yes.
Okay, so we have two bid waivers that we're requesting. One is for competitive bidding for the HVAC condensing unit replacement. And the issue here is really that the manufacturer that we would like to use, it's actually the current manufacturer, Carrier. I'm not seeing that those, the chief's letters made it into the document. Sorry about that. It's urgent that we get the unit in as quickly as possible before the summer cooling season. The manufacturer has provided a substantial discount and a rebate to us as compensation for the fact that the previous unit did not last and the problems caused by the fact that it was failing us. So we are asking to waive the bidding so we can take advantage of that very much-reduced price. The second one is actually a sole-source provider in looking at the building management system. We would like to use the system that is in place here to have continuity between the buildings so that we're using one system in any place. It is a sole-source provider, so that's why we're asking for the bid to be waived.
Okay.
Ed and Don are both on the line if you have specific questions.
That's great. So let's first turn to Chief Anderson. Would you like to add comment for the bid waiver for the HVAC system?
Well, I'm here, but you're figuring it out, so hopefully you can hear me when I'm speaking. As the Board of Selectmen knows, we've had an ongoing issue with our HVAC. Edge End tile has been quite beneficial to us to get this going. We really need to go through the spring and summer season and have this corrected. I do think this is the prudent way to go, keeping the same unit as our second unit on the roof. As far as the bid waivers go for the building management system, this is the same system that we use at the Town Hall. If we went out to bid and we got a bid from the company that has been servicing us for the last seven or eight years that I've been doing this, I would not be recommending, as the Board of Selectmen, that we went with that firm just based on the activity and the failure to correct the problems for the last seven or eight years.
Okay. We have already appropriated the funds for this, so I will now turn to questions from the Board of Selectmen, and I'll turn to Kip first.
I just heard from Chief Anderson that you have two units on the roof, both from Carrier. Is that correct? That was not, I didn't realize that was the case.
Yes.
So with two units, obviously, it makes sense to have a compatible unit.
Yes.
And with the discounts, that makes more sense. Thank you very much on that.
Okay. Okay, Sarah, do you have any questions about the HVAC bid waiver?
I do not have any questions at this time.
Okay. David, do you have questions?
No.
Krista? Krista, do you have any questions about the HVAC bid waiver?
No, no questions on the waiver.
Okay, so the waiver's brief, or the resolution's brief, so I'm going to read it for the public record. Whereas the town of Darien has appropriated funds to replace the HVAC condensing unit at the Darien Police Department, and whereas the need for replacement is of an urgent nature with the summer cooling season approaching, and the manufacturer has provided a substantial discount and a rebate as compensation for the previous unit's lack of longevity costs, now therefore be it resolved that the requirements for competitive bidding for the replacement of the Darien Police Department HVAC condensing unit is waived. I will entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Kip moves. May I have a second?
Sarah, second.
Sarah, thank you. All the, okay. Krista, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
David, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
And Jamie Stevenson votes yes. That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we will turn next to the resolution for the waiving of the requirement for competitive bidding for the Darien Police Department's building management system. I'm not sure if Ed or Don wants to speak to this at all. I think we're all clear about the purpose here, so I will just read the resolution for the record. Whereas the town of Darien has appropriated funds to replace the building management system at the Darien Police Department, and the Public Works Department requests consistency in the building management systems used in town facilities and the desired system provided by a sole source. Now therefore be it resolved that the requirements for competitive bidding for the procurement of the building management system is waived. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
No vote, Sarah.
Sarah moves. May I have a second?
Second.
Kip seconds. David, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
Krista, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Great. Jamie Stevenson votes yes. That's unanimous. Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Chief and Ed, thank you very much for joining our call this evening.
Good night. Thank you for your service.
You bet.
Good night, thank you.
Good night. Okay, moving on to our meeting minutes. We have meeting minutes of March 9th, 2020, our regular meeting minutes. I think that, Krista, you've already given some written amendments, correct?
Kip has as well.
And Kip has as well. Are there any other additions or corrections to the regular meeting minutes of March 9th?
No.
Okay. Okay, great, thanks. Hearing none, then, I'll entertain a motion to approve these minutes as amended.
So moved.
Kip moves.
She mentioned what the amendments were.
Kip's was spelling?
No, the first one was using under bicentennial flags. I said rather than posting the flags...
You're going to hang them.
Hang them or display them.
Right, and then the second one was...
The word instillings, it should be instituting.
Instilling instead of instilling.
Instituting, of course.
Instituting. Krista's were to designate the others who presented reports in the attendance. And a question about whether one of the people speaking, whether they were properly identified as a member of the bicentennial committee, which I believe they weren't, she's right that they were not. So we will check, I will check that and make those corrections.
Okay.
Okay, well, just to clarify, yes, I had mentioned Mr. Hawes. I don't believe he was, so that would be removed from the minutes.
Yes.
And as far as the term "other," I'm flexible on how that is presented. I just, that was more for conversation for this, an ongoing meeting, to co-mingle public comments with presentations. I just thought it was, could be better if we distinguished them.
Okay. Okay, if there are no other corrections or additions, Kip has moved these minutes. May I have a second?
Sarah, second.
Sarah, thank you. David, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
Approve, okay. Krista, how do you vote?
I think yes.
Okay, and Jamie votes approve. Okay, we have special meeting minutes of also March 9th. I'll entertain a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of March 9th.
So moved.
Kip moves. May I have a second?
Sarah, second.
Great, thank you. David, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
Thank you. Krista, how do you vote?
Yes, I vote yes.
Great, and Jamie, Jamie approves. Okay, thank you all very much. We have agenda review.
Hi, this is Krista. When and if we ever begin regular meetings of our subcommittees to which we've been placed, I just wanted to throw it out there, is it worthwhile? Would people be interested to have reports from our respective committees? I don't want to add length to our meetings, of course, but just wanted to mention it as, you know, Kip serving on the Ox Bridge, I serving Pear Tree Point, Sarah on Thriving News, and David on Blight, if that might be of interest that we add that to agendas.
Absolutely, thank you. Yes, we will do that. Any other...
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other agenda review? Okay, moving on, then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sarah moves.
Kip moves. Sarah, second. David, do you vote to adjourn?
Vote yes.
Krista?
Yes, I vote to adjourn, and thank you so much to everyone who made this possible for us to meet in this format.
You're welcome. And Jamie votes to adjourn.
Yes.
And again, I'll leave you with my parting comment, please. It's up to each one of us to make the difference to stop the virus in the town of Darien. Thank you very much for your help and stay well.